Good afternoon, everybody, and welcome to the North Bend City Council Work Session for Monday, December 9th at 4:30 PM here in the council chambers. After calling the meeting to order, we will go ahead and administer the oath of office for our newly-elected council members. We will go ahead and start with Mayor-elect Jessica Engelke, if you could come down. I have a copy for you as well.
Thank you.
I will.
Give me just a second.
And I have a more than that. Okay. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I, Jessica Engelke, do solemnly affirm.
Okay. Eager. I, Jessica Engelke, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Mayor for the city of North Bend.
Of the Office of Mayor for the city of North Bend.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
We'll have you sign one here.
All right.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
Okay. You may just eat it at the dais. Next, we will have Counselor-elect Matt Hamilton. Copy for you as well.
That was the last one.
Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Matt Hamilton, do solemnly affirm.
I, Matt Hamilton, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Counselor for the city of North Bend.
For the Office of Counselor for the city of North Bend.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations. And next, we will have Counselor-elect Tim Slater come down.
I'm not going to be used to that.
All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me.
Okay.
I, Tim Slater, do solemnly affirm.
I, Tim Slater, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Counselor for the city of North Bend.
The Office of Counselor for the city of North Bend.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations. Thank you. And then lastly, we have Counselor-elect Melinda Torres. All right. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I, Melinda Torres, do solemnly affirm.
I, Melinda Torres, do solemnly affirm.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
That I will support the Constitution and laws.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
Of the United States and the state of Oregon.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And the Charter and ordinances of the city of North Bend.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Perform and discharge the duties.
Of the Office of Counselor for the city of North Bend.
Of the Office of Counselor for the city of North Bend.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
According to the law and the best of my ability.
Congratulations. All right. We'll go ahead and take a moment to do photos if any of the family want to come up with the council or their counselor or mayor.
Well, how, I'm just going to say, Counselor Melinda, go first. Would you like to take a photo up here with your families?
Grandma. Mom, I have to like make, call out your names to like.
I was trying to tell them.
I was like, you don't think I'm going to call you out? Angela. Angela, come here.
Okay, you all hold your oath of office. Hold your.
Oh, yeah.
Okay, ready? One, two, three. All right, this side is over.
This is the back.
All right, ready? Here we go. All right, any of you all have the camera? You want one there? She'll get copies of these, but just in case you want one. Okay, all right. All right, we'll need that back. See, who's next? Tim Slater? Do you have anyone you want a photo? You want a photo with yours, holding yours? You want a photo holding your oath of office? You have anyone, any family that are here that you want a photo with? All right. Do you want a photo with you holding yours? Okay.
I'll take one with me, then.
Aww. There you go. You want someone else?
Come on.
I like to be by myself.
I mean, we've been around forever.
All right, ready? All right, here goes, ready?
Thank you. Thank you, sir.
All right. I need to do an oath of service.
You got that?
Yeah. Macy will have a fit if I don't. Next, Counselor Hamilton? All right, me? Okay. All right. Here goes. All right. Anybody else? All good? Okay. Thank you. And the mayor.
Okay. I made Sophia get out of the swim, swim teen pool, so she's.
Hey! You did your picture again, wow! You want to hold your oath of office?
Sure.
I'll crop in, yes, I can.
Crop her out, save Photoshop and land.
There you go, ready? That, I don't know how to do. Super pose. Excellent. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
All right.
All right. Mr. and Ms. Reporter, will you hold us with a roll call this evening?
Absolutely.
Counselor Jones.
Here.
Counselor Hamilton.
Here.
Counselor Garbo.
Here.
Mayor Engelke.
Here.
Counselor Schultz.
Present.
Counselor Slater.
Here.
Counselor Flores.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. That takes us number four on the agenda, which is our public comment. It looks like I have one person here in person and none online?
Correct.
All right. So before we begin public comment, I'd like to take a moment to say thank you for participating in public comment this evening. The public comment period is an essential part of local government meetings. Each person has three minutes to speak, and our governing body takes input into consideration. However, in observance of Oregon Open Meeting Laws, this isn't a time for dialogue, but rather a time for us to listen to you. Our city administrator and city reporter are taking any notes if action needed. So we have Mr. Chris Castleman. If you want to go ahead, please come forward and state the city that you live in.
I don't live in a city.
Okay. You're not a resident of North Bend, correct?
I'm Chris Castleman from Coos County.
From Coos County, not in North Bend.
Yes.
I wanted to make sure that we note that. Okay. When you're ready, we'll go ahead and start the timer.
Good evening, Mayor Engelke. One of tonight's agenda items has the word discriminate written 51 times, 51, in six pages. Must be a pretty important word, right? What does it mean? Well, I looked it up. Discriminate, to treat a person or group of people differently because of their race, gender, sexuality, et cetera. That's from the Cambridge Dictionary. Sounds pretty simple, right? Your city has a notice of nondiscrimination right on your website, and it reads, "The city of North Bend strives to treat all people equally. It is our policy not to discriminate based on race, color, national origin, et cetera." In tonight's action sheet, which you guys have even outlined nine federal and state laws pertaining to discrimination. It says prohibits discrimination, prohibits discrimination, over and over. You even have an affidavit of compliance that makes businesses sign and affirm their compliance with anti-discrimination laws. So I imagine we're all on the same page at this point. If you're given preference to or separate treatment to one class of people over another, then you're discriminating. For example, imagine I own a business, say, a hydraulic shop, and I put an ad on Craigslist that says I am hiring with a little sentence at the bottom that reads, "Preference will be given to straight, white males." Straight, white males? That would be discrimination. I'd be in the news, Facebook would lose their minds, I would clearly be in violation of several state and federal laws. So where am I going with all this? Well, I saw something rather shocking on your website the other day. This is the North Bend Urban Renewal Agency Request for Expressions of Interest in Leasing this building, the Bay Cleaner Building. It says at the bottom, "Preference will be given to minority-owned businesses." Huh? So if I'm a black woman, my business is going to be given preference? Why would you give preference to one class of people over another? I thought we just went over this. If you're given preference to one class over another, then you are discriminating. Got it? Your own request for interest in the Bay Cleaners Building is discriminatory. You are in violation of your own policies, along with several state and federal laws. Do not make up policies if you are incapable of following them yourselves. The city of North Bend is openly practicing discrimination while simultaneously grandstanding against it. Please practice what you preach. Thank you, Mayor Engelke.
Thank you for your time. Next on the agenda is number five, the organizational meeting for council president selections on page one of our packet. I see a staff report here. Mr. City Administrator, is there something specific you want to add here or?
This is straightforward. This is out of your city charter. So after each general election, you have an organizational meeting. And so per Chapter 4, Section 17, the council is required to hold an organizational meeting to select a council president. The council president fills in in the absence of the mayor. And so there's no specific staff recommendation. This is a discussion and selection process among the council.
Okay. Thank you. So one of the questions that I had with this is if the council president was elected tonight and in 12 months they were to step down and that they would participate in being council president for 12 months, but not a year, what would that look like? Would they, would we just have a meeting like this again after 12 months after that resignation?
So again, we fall back to your charter. I could look it up. When it says, once a vacancy is declared, currently you have, for instance, a, the mayor is a member of the council. So if that's declared vacant, the council can actually appoint that. I would have to check the charter to see if there's a timetable that'd say you would have to go to election. Within, I'm just not familiar with that particular section. But in this case, generally, if there's an absence, the council president would step up and fulfill the role of the mayor until successors are placed. Also, if the mayor is absent and the council president is absent, then the remaining council members, per your charter, select an acting mayor for that meeting. I do that.
Yeah. So the council president, over the last 24 months, has been Counselor Garbo. And I would like to ask Counselor Garbo if he would continue on with those duties if the council so wishes. I'll make you note that this is a bit of a different year as far as maybe time away that I may have. As the Oregon City's president, I did check the calendar, it would probably be a meeting or two that I may miss. Although I will try to make those meetings on Zoom whenever possible. And so that would be my ask, is if Counselor Garbo would continue to be council president. Is there any other comments or questions from the counselors? Or Counselor Garbo himself? One, two?
I just don't know. I guarantee you.
Yeah.
Then also, hot for president?
So what would we? So is there, are we looking for making census for the council, or do we need to actually hold an election?
So this is a advertised, published meeting, so you would actually take, and because it's a charter requirement of having an organizational meeting, so this is no different. So the first thing that you would do, Madam Mayor, is entertain any motions so that you can get the discussion for appointing and then have discussion involved to find out whether or not you have anyone that wants to.
Okay.
Put in for it, if you will.
I feel like I was. Heard a motion here.
No. I moved to appoint Larry Garbo as our president when the mayor's not here.
Okay. I heard a first from Counselor Schultz and a second from Counselor Slater. Any further discussion? All in favor of Counselor Garbo being appointed to council president, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. All right. Then number six on the agenda is South Coast Development Counselor Board. We have a presenter here this evening. We have chair and the roundings are mic's, so I think it picks up volume pretty good, doesn't it?
It does.
Awesome. Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to be here, Madam Mayor and Council. My name is Lexi Woodward, and I'm the Executive Director for the South Coast Development Council. Okay. So the basics for the South Coast Development Council is we are a 501(c)(3) nonprofit dedicated to regional economic development. We are headed by an executive director, which is me, and I started January 8th of this year. I moved here from Texas for this opportunity. I am supported by a member-elected seven-member executive committee, as well as up to a 30-member Board of Directors. We are located in Coos Bay at the Newmark Center on the SWAT Coos campus, and we serve Coastal Lane, Douglas, as well as all of Coos and Curry Counties. We view ourselves as an extension of the City of North Bend Economic Development Team. Next year, we'll be celebrating our 25th anniversary. We were originally formed by Coos County members, including the city of North Bend, to improve local economic prospects through traded sector recruitment and attraction. We expanded in 2014 to include business retention and expansion, as well as an expanded territory. We now unite and promote the 12 incorporated cities in Ford County region. We engage public and private stakeholders across the region to pursue economic development opportunities while providing complementary technical assistance to retain, expand, and attract companies and industries that provide living wage jobs in and to our territory. As you can see, as your city administrator is our past chair, he led SDC for the prior two years. You can see our other Board of Directors there as well. And the city of North Bend is our highest level of annual membership at the $10,000 rate, and that is paid to us out of your Urban Renewal Agency funds. You can see our other top annual members there, as well as some of our other members. The other cities that are members of SCD include Florence, Bandon, Reed'sport, Coos Bay, Coos Bay's URA separately, Kokil, Gold Beach, and Lakeside. Are there any questions so far? Our team includes me, our economic development technician Courtney, who's here tonight, and Tanya Rosley, our entrepreneurship program manager. We have secured funding from the Bandon Dunes Charitable Foundation and the Ford Family Foundation to hire an economic development manager who will start in January, and they will be solely responsible for business retention, expansion, and attraction. Services we offer include BREE, so business relocation and expansion. So what that looks like is we connect businesses with expansion incentives. We offer workforce assistance and other resources and contacts. Overall, we help resolve retention and growth challenges. An example from 2014 was we assisted a service-based business out of North Bend. All of the green is examples from this year to date for the city of North Bend. So these were businesses or individuals within the city that we've assisted to date. For business attraction and recruitment, we promote the region and real estate opportunities to companies outside the region, as well as brokers and site location advisors, developers, and investors. And we connect prospects to incentive, workforce, utility, government, and other resources data and contacts. Some examples so far today in North Bend was Project Table and Project Pescado. Pescado means fish in Spanish. Those were Business Oregon leads, and Business Oregon is the economic development department for the state of Oregon, and they feed leads to the economic development organizations. We helped the Big Lots broker with some data that they were looking for. There was a waste bi-product plant we assisted, and so on. Services that fall under both business relocation and expansion, as well as attraction and recruitment, included that site selection assistance. So sometimes companies are already here and they're looking for a different location, typically because they need bigger space. We also act as the enterprise zone manager. That's a state incentive. We manage three zones, the Lower Amquah Bay Area, which is your zone, and the Kokil Valley Zone. And that incentive is for businesses that hire a certain type of employees at a certain wage. We create and grow businesses from within with all of our new entrepreneurship programming that I'll talk about next. And then we supply economic development information important to all those stakeholders that we've already talked about. And we host a bi-weekly South Coast Economic Exchange for regional economic development awareness and cooperation. So every two weeks, everybody who's interested in economic development or who works in economic development day to day, we meet and we go over one topic per month. So two one-hour sessions on a given topic. So for example, the topic for this month was housing. So we had two speakers talk about housing, and attendees that were interested in that topic were able to come. But the point of the South Coast Economic Exchange is to have all the economic development practitioners kind of working together and going in the same direction. We created and just recently updated the region's top employers list, and we also created an interactive economic development map, which I'll talk about later. And then I do also serve on the North Bend Main Street Economic Vitality Committee. So we launched a new website a couple months ago, and so you can see kind of what it looks like. The Invest Here tab, you can see all the tabs that we've built out. So those are for all those people that are looking to invest in our area. So we talk about the region as a whole, our quality of life, which is one of our main selling points. We have a property search feature where you can locate properties that are available for sale or lease. We have a section on incentives, utilities, as well as taxes. And then in our data section, we have all sorts of demographic data, this interactive economic development map, our regional top employers list, all sorts of information on transportation, and then a bevy of reports and links that people would be interested in that are looking to invest here. And on the right-hand side, that is an example of the interactive map. So I put in the address for here and then scrolled in. All those different colors are different layers. So the map has all these different layers. So you can view what utility serves that location, what school district serves that location, what city, county, and more serves it, as well as where it is in relation to things they care about, like the colleges, ports, state trails, parks, and other quality of life amenities. So you can put in an exact address to pull up all those layers, or you can just zoom into the map to see what you want to see. And you can toggle on and off the layers. I think there's about 30 layers total, and there's five more that we want to add to it. So just to give you an example of what we mean by business attraction and how we work on that, we put together this two-week timeline. on that, we put together this two-week timeline that illustrates how we do that. So on day one, for initial contact, and this happened in May of this year, this is a, you know, a real example. A consultant for a clean energy business prospect contacted SCDC to explore opening a local plant. And we helped coordinate a meeting with the consultant, the business consultant, Business Oregon, et cetera. Were this prospect to happen, and it's still a live prospect, I believe it was an equivalent of 30 full-time jobs. In days two through 15, we provided the businesses consultant with contacts from six local companies for source materials. So they needed to find out if there was enough wood byproduct to supply them where they to locate here. On day 11, we did a regional collaboration. So we asked the Bay Area Chamber of Commerce Executive Director for relevant company contacts, so if they had any chamber members that worked in the wood or wood byproduct field that we could connect our prospect to. And she was invited to the prospect meeting to facilitate those connections. Day 14, that included a regional introduction and tour. So I met with the executive committee and we discussed the prospect, and they made suggestions for additional contacts, as well as a local incentive that I hadn't heard about. And then from there, I went straight to the meeting with the business prospect, their consultant, the chamber executive director, the Business Oregon representative, which again is the State Economic Development Department. And we talked about partnerships and resource availability. We also invited a Coos County Commissioner because he is an expert in wood, the wood industry here. After that, we toured two wood companies. So that picture from the left to the right is the business consultant, the local business representative, me, and then the business themselves is on the right. On day 16, we provided the consultant with information on state and local incentives. And day 17 and on, if previsibility is positive, we'll collaborate with Business Oregon on incentives. And then we will continue to assist with site location, meetings with elected officials if they want them, and navigating the permitting process if they need that help. And we'll offer continued support with financing, permitting, workforce, and any other challenge that they may have. But overall, we will provide concierge service from the lead coming in to move in, through to expansion, through to relocation if needed. So new for SCDC this year, really getting into it, is entrepreneurship. So instead of attraction, only thinking of attracting companies or businesses from outside the area into the area, we are now including growing them from within as a part of our attraction efforts. So we secured two grants, one Business Oregon grant, one Economic Development Administration grant to launch entrepreneurship programming, as well as a business incubator. So that's what I'll talk about in these next two slides. So far, what's been done to date this year is we opened the South Coast Accelerator, which is the marketing name for the business incubator. That is located at the Newmark Center where our office is, as well as where the SBDC office is. So that provides a hub for startups in the tech, clean energy, shipping manufacturing, and blue economy. So it's targeted business development for the sectors that we feel like are emerging or are existing for the area. We currently have two tenants with three more potentially moving in early 2025. Our Entrepreneurship Program Manager in partnership with the Small Business Development Center Director, and by six North Bend businesses, you can read about who those were there. We've toured two North Bend businesses in the accelerator and hope that they move in. One is a manufacturing company, and one is an app developer who is now moving into the South Coast Accelerator, excuse me. We successfully launched the first Co-Starter's Core cohort, which is a 10-week program that guides participants from business idea to launch. We launched that in November and just had our graduation. Three out of four graduates from, were from North Bend. We are having a pitch night for the first time in Coos County. If you've heard of the pitch night in Douglas County. So that's an expansion from there to here, and then we'll expand it to Curry County as well. We received 14 pitch night applications, and five businesses were selected to pitch, including three from North Bend. And then again, the South Coast Economic Exchange, I already talked about that, but we typically have 41 participants invited with an average of 18 to 25 regularly attending meetings. And the picture on the upper right is the entryway to the business incubator. On the lower right, that is our Co-Starter's Core graduation ceremony. And on the bottom left is the Co-Starter's Class in Action. So 2025 plans, again, will be that first-ever pitch night next month. We hope to see as many people as possible to attend. It's free to attend, but we encourage registration for our grant tracking and other purposes. Two new very exciting partners are moving into the business incubator. That's Business Oregon, the Economic Development Department for the state, as well as another very exciting new partner, which we weren't 100% sure was public or not yet, so we aired on the side of caution and are holding on for now. But it's a very exciting partnership. So right now, in the incubator space, there's us, the Small Business Development Center, as well as Oregon Apex, which helps businesses get contracts. So with these two other economic development partners moving in, that's five economic development partners on the same floor in the same building. So when tenants move in, they have all of these players right next to them, next door. And that doesn't even include all the programming that comes with their tenancy as well. So Coos County Pitch Night, January 17th at the Egyptian Theater. We plan to expand the Co-Starter's, which is that 10-week business program, into Roseburg, Reed'sport, and then working with Mayor Engelke on a generator youth program, I believe. And then One Million Cups is a free, community-driven program that supports entrepreneurs by fostering collaboration and idea sharing. And that launches in February, and that's just a coffee event every Wednesday morning. Are there any questions on any of that?
No, I was just gonna add that in my work here, that's where I take off my mayor hat and put on my professor hat, and am able to do things with this, the entrepreneurial students. That's the day, my day job is teaching at Southwest Oregon Community College. And as a teacher, I just want to say thank you for pulling all those resources together because it was great this year when I was able to have a class over at the Newmark Center, and I'm like, let me grab Lexi, and let me grab the Small Business Development Center Director. And it's just everything that these young entrepreneurs would need is right there. So with that professor hat on, I thank you. And as the mayor hat, I thank you for all the things that you're doing for the region.
Thank you.
Can you tell us about the services or industries that you've gotten with the years? Because I'm curious about the startup that you put up just a little bit.
For this area, correct?
Yes.
Well, I've only been here since January 8th, but my impression as far as what we have going for us is hydrogen or biogas, so clean energy type of stuff, as well as there's continued interest in wood byproduct. That's what I've seen as kind of our two biggest areas so far this year. And as well as some manufacturing, there's been a surgical instruments prospect that was pretty serious, and as far as I know, is still active. A lot of just relocations for places needing a bigger space, which is of course, good to see. Macy, am I okay on time? So I've got two more slides here that we put in just in case we had time. So overall, looking at the South Coast, these are the challenges and opportunities I see for the region as far as economic development goes. So challenges is industrial sites lack sufficient utilities and infrastructure, and public infrastructure needs exceed available funding. So an opportunity there is to invest in site preparation ahead of time to enhance readiness. So businesses used to be okay with a 24-month lead time to move in. That has dramatically shortened, and now it's more like six months to a year. So it's more important than ever that sites are ready with utilities ahead of time before the opportunity comes. They're less willing to work with you to make the site ready over time. They want it ready now. And then we can leverage grants and partnerships. So there's infrastructure grants through Business Oregon, and then public-private partnerships. You can do costs around infrastructure and things like that. A challenge could be high interest rates may delay some new projects. I have not seen that so far here, but the cost of goods does drive up the prices for everybody, including businesses, and so that may delay some expansions and such. We can continue to consider public-private partnerships and leverage state and federal incentives to help combat that. Another challenge is workforce shortages. So 10 industries had vacancies of 100-plus in southwest Oregon in 2023. Healthcare and social assistance took the top spot at 799 vacancies. We can continue to invest in workforce development programs and partnerships with local educational institutions, with a particular eye towards making those as accessible as possible. So what I'm told is it's great that the programs exist, but especially with our rural area, and we're a less connected area internet-wise, there's some accessibility challenges there. There's increasing concerns about climate change and then potential government regulation, which drives up costs in response to that, and sustainability may influence decisions. So companies look for regions that offer renewable energy sources and demonstrate resilience to extreme weather events. We could position the region as sustainable by emphasizing and further tapping our natural resources, renewable energy potential, and commitment to sustainability. We could invest in both clean and traditional energy infrastructure. And then of course, I'm sure we're all familiar with the availability and quality of housing, childcare, healthcare, and other essential workforce needs here. But there is a lot of stuff happening on all those fronts. I'm so grateful that so many of our partners are working on those, and we do not need to lead any of those. We're in a support role. So we can continue to work on all those, and like I said, ongoing efforts are showing progress there. The challenge is that companies look for locations that offer a high quality of life, which we have, but also they want K through 12 to be high for their kids, and our public safety rankings work against us as well. So people want safe communities and good schools for their kids. We can continue to capitalize on a high quality of life and continue to focus on place-making. Place-making efforts here and in Coos Bay and other places in our region are wonderful. They're the exact type of thing that businesses want to see, so we just need to continue that momentum. And then we can continue to promote livability and enhance our local assets like nature, recreation, arts, and culture. And then ongoing supply chain. All right, well, this last one, this is just how anybody can help with economic development. So you can be a Yimby, that means a yes in my backyard. Don't be a Nimbie, which is a no in my backyard. You can be welcoming, or at least open, to new ideas and opportunities, and respectful of the desires of other community members, understanding that what you may want for your community may not be what other people want for their community. And try not to be a banana, build absolutely nothing anywhere near anything, or a cave person, citizens against virtually everything. You can be a community advocate and promoter. Don't be unaware of or dismissive of the potential of the region. This is the fourth state I've worked in economic development. The quality of life here is sublime. We do really have assets here to work with. I think that's where I'll leave it for tonight. Macy has his PowerPoint if you want to delve in any deeper. Thank you.
Thank you. I think we have one question here from Councilor Slater.
Yeah. As we look at all the deal line, the obvious things, and of course, healthcare is the big thing, is the doctors and nurse practitioners and so forth, and it says that we're covered that way. But I was thinking too, do we ever get into pursuing retail from the sense of, you know, we really lack clothing and those things available, which means, you know, if you want to buy something, you travel 120 miles over Eugene to take care of that. And I know that's sort of a buy-to-buy, but I get that feedback, my, well, there's a lot of great places to shop, but something as simple as clothing is an issue. So I don't know if that's come up as part of the old quality of life.
I mean, no matter where you are, everybody wants more retail, more restaurants. That's just what citizens always want. Those types retailers and those types of users, they know exactly where they need to be to be successful. So it's often not as much a matter of direct recruitment, but as much as do your demographics match what they say they need to be successful. And so what they look at is income levels, whether or not income levels are rising, also a number of housing units, and whether those housing units are rising. So those are some things that retailers and restaurateurs look at when deciding to go to a place.
Thank you. Okay. Next on the agenda is our Homeless Advisory Committee Report. I believe we have Mr. Ron Moore here this evening. Thank you for joining us here tonight.
Better get these out so I can see.
Yeah. So the council recalls that Mr. Moore was appointed to the Homeless Advisory Group a couple months ago?
I think two months.
Two months ago.
Two months ago, yeah.
So you had the opportunity to attend several meetings.
Yes, and I'm just honored to be allowed to do that. I've been, I've been suffering, you know, from, from imposter syndrome. I, I think, when are they gonna find out that I don't know what I'm talking about? You know, that kind of thing. But it's been, been a great two months, and it's been overwhelming, actually, the process that goes through at this. And I don't know how often that they have come in to make the reports, but as far as I'm concerned, it's, it's, it's just, there's just so many tentacles on what they're, what this group is doing. And, and then of course, there's this whole idea of learning a new language, because the government uses a lot of acronyms. And, and so the first week that I was there, the first meeting I was there, I mean, it was just alphabet soup to me. And thank God for Google. And I've learned a lot about that, but I, I'm also impressed with the board members on, and their, their patience with me, because I am really new at this, so. So I'll tell you what I can. I've been in touch with Eric and Eric Schirmer about what actually to say. And so I just decided what I, I would just say, just what I've noticed from the last couple of months. And I'm, I'm on the, I'm on the homeless board meetings. They've also asked me to come into the executive meeting, I think, just so I can learn how to understand what they're saying. I really believe that, and I really appreciate that. But the things that we're doing right now that, that'll be coming up is our point in time, the pit count is coming up next month on the 29th and 30th. And that's gonna be done a little different this year, evidently, the, I'm sorry, the, the housing and urban development have, has required this to happen. And so ORCA and our group is meeting together, be meeting at the North Bend Community Center. Oh, I'm supposed to say this too. They would really appreciate it if you would donate that building that, those days, because there's really not a budget to it. I don't know if that's the time I should say that, but parentheses, asterisk.
People have our city recorder and.
Right.
Know that.
I'll let those guys know. I said this. It will help me a little bit with whatever I'm supposed to be doing. We also have been talking about the whole village, the project, the salvage terms doing at Coos Bay, and eight tiny homes that are being put in. And that's been an amazing project, and very quickly done. By the way, I think at the end of this month, from what we, we've received from their reports, is that they'll have two, two units done this month. I think for, I've just got it here somewhere, February, March, they'll have three more, and the final three in April and May, fully operational by June 2025. And so there's a process of, of the funding and the billing that needs to be, needs to be secured at that point. But they're well, I asked again today because it just seems like a huge project. They're putting in eight individual room, housing, that will hold either families or individual people. They're putting in a commercial kitchen that the group can use, a community center, a dog cleaning station, which is just ingenious, I think. But a fairly nicely thought-out project, and they're working quite. But a fairly nicely thought-out project, and they're working quite well with that. The funding, I think, is coming in. We, we're talking with the Youth Authority Group, AYA, and they're, they're, they're on track with all the funding that they're getting, which is evidently, and you guys know more than I do on this, is evidently a real process of making sure that funds are coming and funds are being spent at the same time. And then, of course, the last thing that, that we have talked about is the Nancy Deverell Center. And I know that doesn't have as much to with North Bend as in Coos Bay, but there is a process that's going on right now. And as you know, they're closed and probably going to be, the property is going to probably be sold, it looks like. But there may be a merger, there's actually some talk about merging HRO with the Nancy Deverell Center to allow it to continue. And so they don't lose that nonprofit status.
Internal or GOR.
I'm sorry, yeah, ABC.
I knew that was right.
Yeah, it was, it's in there someplace with the homeless group, resource center. But I, I think it's, you know, mostly what's happening right now is pretty status quo for the last, the end of the year. They seem to be just running on what they have been doing, and everything's going to change in, in, in January. So my report really is pretty mundane, but that's where I am right now. It's mostly in a learning situation and God help me.
We appreciate you being North Bend's representative.
I love it, absolutely.
Is there any questions from the council?
I have one question. So for the PIT count, like what if we have like volunteer, or community members that want to volunteer for the PIT count? When is that going to be happening?
That's happening very quickly, and I think it's coming through all the stakeholders in, in the community. So I thi, I'm not sure exactly which ones. I don't think that we've actually been told that, but there will be coming in January. It's, it's, the count isn't until the end of January sometimes, so the 29th and 30th.
So we should be a second.
Suddenly it will be coming up pretty quickly, I'm sure, yeah.
Okay, and any other questions, Council?
Thank you.
All right, we appreciate you coming in tonight. And if, if it would fit into your schedule to stop by maybe monthly and give us an update?
I will do that, yeah. And I'm sure that next time I'll have a little bit more in-depth understanding of what I'm doing.
Yeah, okay.
Thanks a lot for your patience.
Yes, thank you for your time. Okay, next on the agenda is number eight. This is our affidavit of compliance with resolution number 3287. On, we have, and I know Counselor Garvoden is to step out for a minute, so we can. I was going to say like, do we? What's that? Start the discussion on number nine?
Yeah.
Okay, let's go ahead and bump eight for a moment. And so we can, you can be part of that discussion, and we can begin this discussion on number nine, which is the consideration of sanitary sewer revenue and future pathways for funding. This sounds very shattering, I can't wait to hear about it. And we probably have a presentation to staff here, Mr. Dunham. I say that with all sincerity.
Honorable Eric, members of the City Council, we have, after almost 18 months of presenting to you, we have a new council now, but on, I believe, six public hearings, we put out a vote to increase our sewer fees. We did anticipate because of Measure 6176 that it was a difficult avenue to take because we needed about a 72% affirmative, not just a 51% majority because of the way our charter amendment is written, but it didn't pass regardless. I think actually it was 6337, but why about a 64 vote, it did not pass. As we presented this, one of the most telling, there's a couple telling things included in your packet, once where our sewer rates are currently at compared to the rest of the state. The other, the financial analysis, if on page nine of the Waterworth analysis shows us essentially if we continue to maintain our system based on our current capital improvement plan, we will go broke in 2029. If we fail to maintain the system, then we have faced federal restrictions, federal and state restrictions, we start having loss of service and other issues. And, and this is kind of an introductory, what next discussion? I brought up four broad categories to you of what to do or potentially where to go from here. One is do nothing, there's always a do nothing option. I think it's fairly evident where that is heading, that period will probably take five to 10 years before we have probably the state step in and force us to do something. I think we'll maintain it for that. Well, we'll run out of money in four years, and then we'll start having issues that require, we'll get, the state usually doesn't react in a year or two. They start threatening and trying to get us to help ourselves, but somewhere between five and 10 years ultimately, we'll start having some issues and the state will help us fix that. Takes away local control, but that is a viable option. There's always that option. We can go out for another vote. Again, I think there's things that we could have done better. In our voter, we got some feedback, most of that feedback was after the measure was initiated and people saw that. Where we were kind of handcuffed on commenting about it and having additional, and we didn't have a lot of participation. Out of the five or six public hearings we held on this, including the talk of the town, I think we had a total of nine attendees outside of people that show up normally to everything. So that wasn't, even though we put together the information, we're willing to discuss it. You have a lot of viewers in the council meetings, three of those were in council meetings. But the questions really never came up until after it was on the ballot, at which point it was council support only. Not that you didn't support it, but there was a lot of questions and a lot of ideas tossed out by people finally getting into it, and it was too late to have staff prepare anything or consider other options. One of the major options I heard, or issues I heard was the 5% I talked to you into to fund the plant down the road, not having an ending point, but at that point, the ballot measure's done. No discussion. We also didn't have anything in the voter's pamphlet, was one of the complaints I heard. There was no explanation in the voter's pamphlet. So not that it couldn't go again, but with the, what I call the super majority, the majority of the electorate, it still is a very chancy issue going out to another vote. Just because it's, it'd high voter turnout, one, and two, we need everybody, our majority in favor. With the voter turnout we had, November's used it highest elect, or voter turnout, we calculated we needed 72% in favor, not 51, that the charter amendment got put in on, but 72% in favor. So that's it's not a viable option. It's kind of not necessarily a high probability of securing a new vote. Additional options are legislative fix, going to our state legislature as a public utility and seeing if we can get relieved that way. We started that discussion a little bit with our legislature, but we have not pushed that or followed up specifically on that. And really, the last viable option is to sell our facility or sell our utility to somebody else, who then is not restricted by Measure 6176. You know, that's even a probability if we do nothing because the state's going to have us fix it somehow at some point down the road. But today was mostly to alert you to the options, discuss, have any discussion that you may want on the issue, and to kind of prioritize from your end what you would like to see staff go after from this point forward. I mean, do you want us to push hard with the legislature? Do you want us to go out and look and see if somebody's interested in buying our facilities? Do you want us to go to another vote? Go ahead.
Or have other cities sold their?
I'm not specifically aware of people selling their system entirely. There are Jacobs Engineering, OMI, Coos Bay, operated Coos Bay for years. They maintained their, they kept their facilities. I know there are cities that it's like any other public uti, or public utility, you can sell it. Mark may qualify there for it, we may have to have Mark step in, but that is a potential option. I haven't seen it specifically, I haven't researched it that deep. Operations is fairly common, Brookings, Coos Bay, just off the top of my head, are operated by, were operated, Coos Bay took theirs back, but were operated by OMI, which is now Jacobs Engineering. Sutherland is, I believe. There's probably 20 facilities in the state that are operated by contract operations.
For a minute here, so we look at, and I'm aware of it, Counselor Slater's probably has information on this since he's been a part of the council in the past. I know this is new to Counselor Torres. And, you know, at the end of the day, the lowest, the lowest at three.
Lowest that we found.
Lowest that we found in all of Oregon, and it's still going to pass. And not only didn't it pass, but if we were to go to a vote of people again, because of the way that our charter is, it has to vote by 1870 something.
Well, it's the majority of the electorate, which means your registered voters. So it's a variable depending on your voter turnout, but you need 51% of your registered voters, which is roughly 6,000.
So when I, when I look at that data, it, I think that's going to be like near impossible to get a raise if it is up to the vote of people. And so not that we couldn't try to go out for one more, one more time in May or even November next year with maybe a different configuration of it all, but in the meantime, I really see one of the only paths forward is looking at selling it. You can, it's not sustainable at the rate of the money that is coming in and the age of it. And if we keep kicking the can down the road, we're going to end up with these catastrophic failures, the state's going to step in anyways and set their own price.
So is the private company. I mean, I think that's what's, you know, to have a private company able to come in and do our operations means that they're going to make a profit, means that that's part of their goal.
Absolutely.
That means it's going to be over and above.
Right, but that's where we're, but that's where we're at. I mean, if you, you know, that's why I'm like saying, I'm willing to, you know, if we came to an agreement to go out to a vote again, but I don't think, I mean, that's where we're at. And people aren't going to want to raise the rate.
There's nuances on that. One option would be to go out for a vote to bring the charter amendment back into just a majority vote, but you'd have to go before the vote of the people to change the charter amendment. So there's nuances on that vote. I mean, there's.
That also takes three quarters of the vote.
Takes what?
To amend the charter amendment?
Yes, yeah, they, they don't want charters to be, well, they need to just change.
So, so putting a, okay, so if we, if we were to explore, I think we kind of have to explore several options at once because some of these options could take a little bit longer. And so what would be the next steps if we were to look at privatization in our summit?
Total privatization would be to send out feelers and get expressions of interest. We also would have to go through with Mark, the legal proceedings in order to, because it would basically either create a special district or a would either have to create a special district or a public utility district. I don't, and I haven't gotten that far into it. I know it's a viable option, I'm throwing that out there. I, I haven't got into that in detail.
Is to kind of like explore what that would look like and how long that would take and if there was anybody who was even interested. Number, the other option, or also, let me tease you through these things, work with our legislators and say, we're in a situation, we're mandated to take care of this, but the funds aren't there to do it with the current fee. How, you know, ask them how they could help us with that. What would that, they would be letting write a piece of legislation or how, what would that look like?
They would have to do it as a, a piece of local legislation through. We're the only city in the entire state of Oregon that has this threshold. So quite frankly, you can't raise a fee by even a penny or create a fee with very, very narrow options without the majority of voters. And so you have been placed on a trajectory for sort of double-way disaster because you're no different than any other government. There's 63% of the governments that are already viscerally strapped, you got the limitations of five and 15 measures, which would take a constitutional amendment to change. You don't have real interest in taxation reform. Meanwhile, your authority to be able to pay for your utilities for providing services have been strapped because of that lawsuit, that charter language. And so quite frankly, you have a government, state, federally regulated utility that you are responsible for, but you cannot raise fees in order to meet the needs. And so that's that regulatory train track that by 2029, that Ralph says that you are on. And so, so you have to find a path forward because quite frankly, a catastrophic failure is, you know, can't flush toilets, sewage backing up, you know, you have sewage in your streams, your water, everything. And so next thing you know, you get fined, you get, you know, all of these regulations put on you. And over the course of a couple of years, it only just then becomes catastrophically worse and you can't pay for it. The, the sewer system is an enterprise. It is supposed to pay for itself to maintain itself. It doesn't have to make a profit, but you have to have money in the bank to take care of, you know, future. And so you're always building up to pay for future. And so you're, you're sort of pitted, if you will, because of your own charter. And so the legislative change would be to resolve the issue. There are other governments in the state, we've done the research. Reed Sport had a similar issue very close to us where they also had a fee provision put on them, but at the same time, it was right about the time that they had expanded their wastewater treatment line. So through the court, they were able to raise fees in order to meet their debt obligation because otherwise they would have gone bankrupt as well. And so there, there are mechanisms to address this particular situation on a, a regulated utility. And so, yes, it would take legislative action in the next legislative cycle, but it wouldn't be just for us, it would really be for the state because I don't think they ever contemplated that through a local lawsuit in a local, you know, kind of court system, that they could stranglehold a regulated utility, which if you don't maintain, how are you going to even pay for those fines? I mean.
Well, there's more on top of it too, like, you know, if the sewer system isn't working, catastrophic failures could happen at any point, they're not predictable, and they, and our pipes are old enough, a bunch of our pipes are old enough that they're adding in time. It, it puts an impact on some of our projects that we already have rolling, like the new, you know, mechanics project, builders for that, the, 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 or school development, the new, the new.
House period.
Houses that are being built, yeah. So, so it's, it's got an immediate impact.
And, and ask Ralph Dunham a question, you said that you had heard like a lot of comments, and so after a time period, and for the newer counselor, the staff can't comment after a certain time period when there's something on the ballot, so they're limited, being able to land for very factual questions.
That's true, but we all agree. That's true, but we all agree.
Yeah. And so my question for Mr. Dunham is like, were you, do you think there's a lot of confusion out there about like, are people thinking that you can use like the tourism money or something for the sewer, or you can use money from the fire department for the, for the sewer rates? Is that like what people are thinking?
I, I think there's a lot of confusion. The major issue, primarily people on fixed incomes, was the fact that we had a five percent. I had several people call me, which I can't ask, answer questions. I cannot promote or, I think a lot of the people wanted to see a more graduated raise in the rates. Or, that was a major comment, it's like I couldn't have staggered it over five years. Or this five percent that once it come off forever, that never ends. Those were the two main questions on the people that actually read and discussed it. Again, we had none of those questions till it was too late to present to you. I mean, we could have presented forty different options to you, but did, did they vary that much? Not really.
You've provided really in, in the report here, a lot of valuable information, which could be packaged that way. For example, as Benny was mentioning, pipe age, you know, to get that age, you get twenty-seven thousand feet that's from the nineteen twenties. You know.
Did that, that would be interesting.
All of that was available online.
There was a online presentation, we pushed it out on the, on the website. I mean, I, I really feel like, I, I think you guys did a good job of trying to inform people, people want to get more money.
I would, I would say potentially that we need to do the free prompt where we're doing all of, all three things where using the feedback, we might want to try and do a different one, put it on about another time, potentially also while trying to figure out other stuff.
I agree. I feel like, I guess it probably sounds ridiculous, but I do feel like there's a moral obligation, if we're going to privatize something, to bring the two scenarios that we have to the public and give them one more opportunity to say yes. If they don't say yes, because I think people would be surprised. I think there's a number of places in here where we actually pulled back the, the actual needs, you know. And if, and if it's privatized and say, we know that in our, in our bids come in and they're all saying, well, the base fee is going to go from thirty-six dollars to a hundred and sixty as soon as we take over, this gives a person an idea. And, you know, some people are going to question that. All we can do is the best we can. But I feel like we should give one more opportunity with more information that has some hard dogged values that we don't know.
And also try to see if we can get in there with the legislators.
Get, get a little bit of six, I mean, yeah, like the, the difference, the difference between sewers and say, public safety is that the sewers have to be operational. It's even more fundamental than how safe I feel on the road. Right? So the, the requirement for us to keep those running actually has a much higher need than some of the other services that we both very much want and need to improve, you know. It's just, it's more basic even than, than our public safety. And we have more control over public safety because that's personnel. You know, that's not the, the, the engine and the parts and the machinery on which we build our other nice things about our beautiful city. So.
I saw Councilor Hamilton do the lean-ins. I feel like you're going to say something.
Yeah, you know, and I don't, I mean, we had, I don't know how many meetings it was presented, it was out there. But I still think there's just, there's, there's still a group of people that, you know, they looked at it when it was on their ballot and then looked at the ballot sheet and, you know, oh, no, I don't want to increase my taxes, but I don't know how you reach out and get people on the same page and the understanding of, you know, here's your point, you either do this, or we have this other thing that we don't want to go into.
Yeah, it's unfortunate that when we have our county and local measures, we get these papers that are being included in the print. And I understand why. And I had met a number of people who sat with me and said, I, there's nothing about the measure. And I read it, I read the ballot and was absolutely like, oh no, this doesn't have nearly the information it should. More that was in the one page insert that we got.
So is, so that is something, so like, if, if, I'm starting to feel like I'm getting a consensus here that we kind of need to do three things.
All three at once, not do nothing.
Well, first off, you have to check the privatization. You know it's going to go by multiple or something, two, three, four immediately.
Yeah.
And you're, you're not going to have any control over what they do in the future.
Yes.
I mean, like you're, they go from thirty-six to a hundred, that's a reality. But if we need some sort of preliminary information out of a potential person to acquire it, as to what they would have to do for initial rates to get the project going, that would give us an additional to utilize on education, on the education part of our ballot.
I understand that, absolutely.
Is, and so would that be, we start looking at that process, trying to get an idea if anybody would be interested or how much it would cost? Start working with our legislators and then is it, then we have a deadline that would be coming up sometime in spring if we wanted, well, before spring, if we wanted it on the main ballot?
Well, there's a lot of things at play here. So trapping in, you know, and, and obviously as Ralph says, this is not something that's been heavily investigated. You know, we, we sort of play volleyball here. I'm thinking, well, I'm not aware of any way, research of a single sanitary sewer system in the state of Oregon that has been able to sell, sell a public utility paid for with tax dollar money, say, in a right. I have seen them outsource that. And, and that's probably what the legal framework probably would be your own framework. And if that's available, you still know better off because they're dependent on the bills and you can't raise the rates even if you outsource. Second fold, we did the aggressive mailers to every utility customer. And it actually had far more information available to them than anything that would have been in that large packet.
Yeah.
The vote showed that there was, and I forget the number, but it was north of four hundred, four hundred slack votes that show that folks voted no moreover than say voting even for the mayor's rights. Which shows you that there was a solid emphasis of no on that, any of the fees. Statewide, forty initiative, sixteen. We can wait till, say, early next year and do another initiative. But because you're an off-election year, I may be wrong about this, but because if you don't have a primary, the cost falls back on us to pay for that election. And so, and those, those aren't cheap. I think they're twenty thousand, yeah, twenty thousand dollars. But that's okay, that's come out wastewater, but that we don't have. If you don't give guidance on, say, a legislative to try to pursue legislative fix, if you don't get in the two-year cycle, we're now in, you know, twenty-seven, twenty-eight. And so there are things that, you know, we, 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 we've talked about this for a year. It's failed, now what do we do? And that's what we as staff need guidance on. We need to know what you're comfortable with. We haven't pursued the legislative thing because we need guidance from the governing body. Because that is basically going to the state legislator saying, we need a legislative fix our own charter that we physically could not even get on our own. It's, it, it, it's not going to happen. You would be going to the voters saying, I need you to fix our charter so that we can address rates for catastrophe that's going to happen, all of which requires a majority vote, majority vote, majority vote, even change it. And I know of no regulated utility, and this, this, this is why there's, you know, I'm aware of five cities in the entire state that have charter language about regulated utilities. It should never, under any court of law, ever happen. And that's why you're always amenable to the people. If people aren't happy with, with the rates, they, they speak at the ballot box. Rates have to occur to cover costs. And as you see the trajectory, we potentially will start having catastrophic failures by twenty twenty-nine. So what do we do now? We don't want to be in a situation of a jail, you know, where it's like, I gotta make decisions because it's too late. So that's what we're trying to do as staff is, and that's what we've been trying to do is front load this. And, and we started this process actually two years ago. But we had to go through the outside, you know, consultations and all of that so that we could get information to put before you and before the public.
Putting sewage on the like increase, this was our first try to do that, correct, at the ballot?
Yes.
As far as amendment or charter amendment or ballot.
Well, we, well, so the new thing is that the twenty twenty, the measure, we, we have the measure that took away the ability.
Yeah, well, and I get that, but we, I can't, we can't, I'm not a part of that. We, we have, that's our reality. And so again, we can't go back in time. Like that is, that is where we are. So we can't do anything about that.
No, I just, I understand that.
The question becomes, we, we've been trying to increase it once. Wouldn't it be prudent to try and like get the feedback from people and potentially try one like again? Before we try to give it to them or do both of it at the same time, where like again, the, can the state help us because if we, if they say no, we, there is no, there is no way to survive.
Yeah, um, so what?
You have the best standing issue right now.
Yeah.
You have, the, the voters have spoken. And so it's clear to the legislature that, what are you going to do?
Yeah.
And, and, and so you, DBU is not going to shut down and stop looking at North Benton. They, they expect those regulations are state federal law. What are you doing?
What we're doing with housing, you know, like how this will increase, because of the potential increase of capacity with some of these projects, I feel like that is just mission critical to, to start moving forward the process of making sure that we are able to have capacity. So I feel like I'm hearing from the council for sure, talk to the legislators. And then, you know, I heard you say it'd be twenty thousand dollars if.
If, if, if it, if it's on our own watch, on an off-election year, yes.
Okay, other way, so, I mean.
Which means between now and short few years.
There are a lot of nuances in this. And when we say twenty twenty-nine is when we go broke, that doesn't mean our system fails that year. The other, when I say nuances, on the do nothing, you can extend the life of our money by doing a little, taking more risk is eventually going to hit. In other words, we're not buying that equipment. We'll see how long it lasts. The other option for, and this isn't my favorite thing, I don't like it at all, but Kuzbay, for example, does not maintain their sewer laterals. That, we're not talking big money here, but we pay about a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year in fixing the residents' sewer laterals. Kuzbay service, they only maintain the main, they don't do anything, we maintain it what we originally installed. But, I mean, there are, the thing's not going to collapse in twenty twenty-nine, I, I guess. So what I'm cautioning, I don't want that word out there. We are, at our current rate of keeping things up, we either have to scale down and then we're putting the system at risk and our citizens at risk, or come up with other options to deal with this. At best, you know, like I said, there's no big fix, so we cut a hundred and fifty thousand dollars out of that. In one year of inflation, we just ate that back up, almost, on our operating costs.
I want to ask you about, so the system won't fail in twenty twenty-nine, like that, that sort of calendar. There's play on both sides of that, right? So, so we could not have a catastrophic failure and just bet on our pipes that had a fifty-year lifetime that are already seventy years or older continuing on. Like that could happen, right?
A percentage of them will, a percentage of them won't.
So, but, but the catastrophic failures could actually start earlier than twenty twenty-nine. So I just, I don't want to lose that. I don't lose that. I just, I just don't want to create the impression that, you know, twenty twenty-nine is where the problems really start. That's not really.
No, our system is getting, as every year passes with our current level, our system's getting older on the average by about half a year. Because current replacement value, we're replacing thirteen hundred to fifteen hundred feet. And our system's aging thirty-eight hundred feet a year is going to get a year old. I mean, I shouldn't say that, fifty-one miles of us getting a year older. But with replacing that, our average age is increasing by half a year every year.
Okay, but twenty-nine is a fiscal.
Is a fiscal budget, Terry.
Yeah, but that's our fiscal.
Correct.
Yeah, assuming that nothing happens, that's a fiscal.
Let it lie.
Assuming remember.
But, but, but take, take into about the three-dollar oops that happened in, in one oh one in Kuzbay.
Yeah.
You know, do we have the money to, to address some of those? So, so you always run reps, that's why you get charged. It's not charged for us. You, you pay to, to maintain the system. And you, you have money coming in that you build up so that you can afford. I mean, it's so different than you try to take care of your house or car or anything. You try to, you know, but you can't take a loan off unless you have a good, solid system. You know, that someone would even, you know, load your money up. So you have to go to the state. It just puts you in a, a real interesting pickle.
Right, they just go back at the same tree and lawn of that.
Yes.
See what you're, see what you're doing legislature, see what you do for anybody. Possibly over, if it's over there numbers, and do a scale back, then do the electric.
And, and Mr. Wolf is, I see him online right now and I was just going to see if there was, if, if we had misspoke about anything or if you had anything that you wanted to add when we're talking about our three options.
No, I don't think I've got anything to add. Sounds like the, the, that there's some options and, and.
They're not good ones.
I'm, I'm a little bit curious about this, this option to, to sell to a private entity. So that's kind of what I've been doing here on my computer during this discussion and I haven't found an answer to it. But I'll, I'll certainly be in touch with, with Ralph and with David on that.
And I think that the, the point that probably would want to make for anybody who's like watching here in person or watching online later is like, we're just trying to look at all options right now. This isn't, I mean, I don't want panic to start setting in that we're going to have poop in our waters tomorrow or that, we're going to sell it. But we, we, we have these rates, we're, we're here for, we came to this situation because of many things that were in play. And we just, we have to look at all scenarios so that we can kind of have to move forward. So we just want to explore all options right now. Is there anything else that you would need from the council tonight?
I think I have pretty clear.
All options.
Yep.
Okay.
Wait, does, does pursuing the all options put some kind of undue burden on all the work that you have to do? Or, because that might be a question to ask. So for example, we're saying pursue three options and all three of them are each time sucks.
Realistically, the, the ballot measure is not something that we would even take a look at right now because we wouldn't want to go out in this next year and cost twenty thousand dollars.
Correct. I mean, originally, looking at potential buyers. That's going to be contacts and some research seeing what, where else this is taking place.
It'd be a legal question first.
It's a legal question first, but, or forming a special district, you could form a special district, then it's outside of your control. I know that option is viable legally, but, again, that's a vote, using a special district. But it's not, not super majority. I think the initial contacts, other than the vote, the vote, if we go back to a vote, that'll definitely take some significant time and more presentations and putting together. I, I think the initial, let's say, making some contacts, doing some research over the next two months. I think May, if we were going to revote, is way too early.
Yeah.
You know, but I don't see it as a, yes, it'll take some time, but I don't see it as a big time sink until we make a decision to go to a, a vote and preparing for that and putting additional presentations together.
Could you collect the feedback though and see that in case you want to talk about what people?
Oh, absolutely. I mean, that would be part of the presentation, why we're going out for a vote again. That, you know, the, here's our pathways and, and like I said, this, this cliff at twenty twenty-nine, we can probably extend a year or two, but you're taking on more risk.
Yeah.
You know, the, that cliff was based on a projected three year, I mean, three percent. Um, you know, the, that cliff was based on a projected three year, I mean, 3% increase every year because we're allowed for that. Um, and we got 2.5 this year. So, um, I'm not belittling that. You know, I'm saying that's a little bit of a variable item too. Or I should say we're getting 2.5 next year under the SSI. Uh, so it's just something that we wanted to bring before you, bring the options, get some direction and have some, it's not a sense of urgency tomorrow, but 2029 will be here pretty quickly.
Yeah. Well, thank you for bringing us some ways to explore and.
Something to think about.
Something to think about. We look forward to hearing those and I would imagine that the city administrator and I would have also some conversations with our legislators. Okay, um, can we take a two-minute recess, two, maybe two and a half minute recess? And then we'll go ahead and come back. We, you had taken a recess, so we bumped to number eight. So we'll take a.
Oh, I thought you were about to say, so you can't.
So we'll take a two and a half minute recess. All right, let's go ahead and come back from our, I think it was more like about a four-minute recess. Come back from our recess and enter back into the council meeting. We were, um, had, um, we need to bump back up to number eight on the agenda, which is our affidavit of compliance. Uh, resolution number 3287 and we have some information in our packet on page five. Um, this was, um, during the last council meeting, by the way, I will let the council know. I wasn't here in person, but I always listen to those. Um, so I was, I was able to listen to the meeting here. So, um, I mean, we wanna go ahead and have our city attorney or our city administrator kind of remind us of where we're at with this discussion.
So, um, yeah, I'll take lead on this. Um, so initially, gosh, back in October, um, we had some news accounts. Again, we're not the best secretary of business. That's only, that's Department of Justice, um, regarding a business that was doing, uh, work for the city. It was actually in the fire department. It was with hydraulic, hydraulic, hydraulic lifts. Um, and also, um, our foreplay. Um, uh, had some conversation. Uh, because of the published reports, the port authority reached out to us. Um, and went to know what we do and how we administer grant funds. Um, we explained that, um, uh, anything over 150,000 has a traditional contract with it. The purpose of that, um, however, um, the majority of all of our grants, um, are actually well under that. So we're spending grant money. So then you have, uh, other state law provisions regarding, uh, grant applications. And so, um, looking at the, um, uh, defined news report, um, uh, I administratively put together an affidavit, uh, put that into place, verified to council. Um, the affidavit itself has actually been working fine. Um, we contacted business organ, went over our process, went over the published reports. Um, everything was, um, A-OK. Um, we then had a follow-up meeting. And of course, we had, um, at that time, two council members object to the affidavit. So that, um, uh, brought us to some additional conversation. On the last meeting, um, uh, taking some feedback from the council, um, the city attorney and I worked to modify, uh, the affidavit, um, um, with, um, the feedback, as I said, that we got. Um, in the 11th hour, we had had one counselor that submitted separate notice changes. And so knowing that, uh, there was a, uh, a new council coming in, um, it was moved to this particular, uh, meeting. Uh, we have just shy of 50 affidavits so far. Um, we haven't had any administrative pushback. Um, uh, it works. It works for complacency for us. Since that last meeting, um, there has been additional, um, inquiries from news media, um, again, about someone that we've done about $22,000 business with. But the, the sort of impetus of the inquiries isn't really targeting North Bend. It's really targeting, um, uh, the big dollars. Um, I sent you some of the news reports if you take the time to read it. Um, having to do with some of the business and the fact that the port authority is looking at potentially a $2.3 billion project and, um, they are giving significant, um, state and federal grant money in. And so, um, uh, they, uh, had initially looked at North Bend, using their words, um, thought our affidavit process was brilliant and was, you know, looking potentially to implement it. Um, however, um, um, with the most recent, um, questions that have come in, they changed a little course of action, uh, and have put together a, um, a Title VI affidavit, non-discrimination policy. Um, their policy requires anyone, um, doing, um, contract with the grant funds to actually file a Title VI non-discrimination, uh, report, um, I believe. Um, I sent, um, uh, that, uh, packet to you all, uh, or at least anyone that, that had asked about it. Um, I have a copy of their, uh, port action, um, dated November 12th. Um, our finance director and myself were at that meeting. They unanimously adopted, uh, that as new policy. And so as a alternative to the affidavit process, um, I've worked with our city attorney on mirroring what the port did, uh, and making sure that it was specific to the city of North Bend. So you, um, uh, this is a discussion item open for you all for discussion. Um, you can, um, sort of give staff feedback. It doesn't, you know, we're, we're not beholden to the affidavit process. You could go as far as do a new, um, non-discrimination policy. Um, we will, um, include this. Um, we'll have to be a little bit more aggressive on the thresholds because we're using, um, a lot of grant funds. So we just have to, you know, uh, we'll, we'll work up additional sort of sign-offs in our procurement process of when, when, when all the contractors are using either state or grant funds. And this is because the private foundations are putting stipulations on it. But we also have state and then federal requirements, um, on use of grant funds and then public funds. So with that said, um, I pass it back to you, uh, Madam Mayor. Whatever the will the council is, um, uh, we all legitimately administratively implement.
Okay. Uh, questions from the council?
So the port is requiring an affidavit signature from all of their suppliers?
Uh, they now have created, uh, they're requiring more than an affidavit. They actually are requiring a actual, uh, plan be filed with them for all use of any rent entities, subcontractors, et cetera, with the unanimous passage of their new, uh, plan. So they actually are now requiring additional work on the contractors. Ours did not require anything beyond just to hear that, you know, you're, you're aware of our policy and, um, uh, you are not, you know, involved in discriminatory, you're not following state federal law. And so we put that in our files, yes.
Does the port and, or family also do this?
Um, actually, um, uh, a few other cities contacted me. When you say specifically what, the affidavit? The affidavit was administratively created for us, administratively created. It is not a requirement. We are using that to, um, show to any grantee that anyone that is using grant funds, we have sort of pre-clared that. They say that they are administering state federal law. We put that in file and we can stop there. The port with their most recent policy has gone a step further, um, for the same reasons that we implemented the affidavit.
And you're saying they're doing Title VI policy?
Yes, yes, yes. They have, um, implemented a very aggressive Title VI policy.
Correct.
Um, and I have, um, I actually have a copy of theirs at my fingertips here, um, with the verbiage of everything that they now require in order to stay within compliance of Title VI.
Yeah.
And so when you open it here real quick, this was unanimously approved by the port. I think the third week of November, right before Thanksgiving. Um, theirs is all grant recipients are now required to submit a comprehensive Title VI plan prior to the execution of any grant. The court is committed and then it goes on, on, on. Um, as part of the development, um, staff recommended a formal policy be established, what they created. And then they've extended it to, uh, all recipients and anyone that is a sub-recipient of those. And so the policy is now applicable to all operations at the port, including the contractors and anyone who acts on behalf of the port and the operations of any private partner, department or agency to which the port extends state and federal financial assistance statement. And so there, they've taken the Title VI to the farthest extent of the law, if you will. Business organ right now is fine with what we're doing.
Yeah.
But we, we haven't gotten subject to a federal law yet.
And, and so in simplest examples, um, if, I, cause I think there were confusion for people who thought like, if I operate a business in, in just North Bend, I have to sign this. This is just if a North Bend business was receiving state or federal grants, working through North Bend. They would then, when they enter in that contract, there would be a point then when they would sign, um, this affidavit of compliances to set an extra layer of compliance to show that they're following the already state federal guidelines. Um, and then, um, and that's it. That's, it's, it's not, I think that, that, like, I had received when I was at my last, um, conference, like phone calls, people thought like, is this every business owner in North Bend? Does everybody have to sign this? This is specifically for people who are receiving those grant dollars. It's just, it's requirements that are already in the grant that this, um, it's, I don't know, for lack of better words. It puts, it just, it's another way of compliance.
Well, it takes us out of investigation business. It takes us way out of investigation business, which we would. We didn't have, didn't have a, a written document that said, they, they've already said they comply.
So, so there's two things that's happening. We're certifying when we receive those monies that we're upholding all state federal laws regarding use of those monies. Well, how do you do that if you have, no. And so when the inquiries came from the media, well, it makes sense that we go ahead and create administratively an affidavit. They sign it off. If we get an inquiry from an agency, we can simply go to our file and say, well, we aren't aware of any. We have the affidavit in the file. We've done what we're supposed to.
Well, when, when.
And that's past mustard with the state. It's, it's not for us to go out and investigate.
So when you say that it's not.
But we do receive the money with those requirements.
So when you say it's like, it's, so then let's say a scenario happens and somebody says, whoa, this thing is happening over here. We say, gosh, we, here's the paperwork. This is the, uh, the organization said that they could comply with this. And let's just say it's, if, if something, um, where there is some discriminatory practices and we say, well, this was signed, but somebody wants to investigate that, where does it go from there?
Potentially with, with the contracts, I mean, I, I'm not contract law expert, but expert, but, but if you're going, if you enter into, say, the affidavit and, and you're, you're false swearing or you're just, you know, you, you lied on the application, that's between you and whatever regulatory agency wants to come back and figure out how they're gonna get their money.
So they could, the regulatory agency could claw back the grant funds or they, like, I'm just trying to figure out like.
Well, there's a similar situation that just occurred. I know, I don't wanna help the organization. But yes, there is, uh, our midjustice investigation going on right now in our backyard with an agency who did receive state and federal funds and they are doing the clawback of those funds. Um, and, and it's, it's kind of a messy process. My goal is to protect the city and stay off the front pages of the news. You know, and by the way, you, 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 I should introduce our nice world, you're the editor now, aren't you? Congratulations. So the news media is here covering this. Why? Because of the particular in, uh, company that keeps showing up in the news, which we have no firsthand knowledge. Over $22,000 worth of business that the city shot.
Right.
I mean, you always say contractors and subcontractors and whatever else. Does this affidavit apply to any supplier, any material the city worked on?
We, we are using it right now for anything that requires a purchase order, which is $1,000 or more. And we've had zero pushback from anybody. Zero push-up.
So you, okay, Ms. Questions from this side of the council? Mr. Slater, Councilor Slater, do you have any questions about this?
You know, it's sort of been interesting going in, but I, I, I see what you've set up, which realistically is, is the way we should be able to approach it, which is we don't have to put your plan or whatever. You certified us, you got a plan and you're following the rules. And that, for our purposes, I believe is, is great and sufficient that way. We didn't require anything more of them. We just said, uh, we need to know, using grant funds, we need to know that you aren't meeting, you know, these particular standards. And I think that's, that's, puts the onus really on them from that point. And I think that's, that's, puts the onus really on them from that point as to what quality it is and what it is and what they're doing. So makes sense to me. And way, I think it's a pretty fairly simple approach to a fairly complicated procedure.
How many grants do you apply for if you don't need to have something like this?
So our example is last year, for every dollar in property tax dollars we got in, we were turned $1.23 back in grant funds. So that gives you an idea, over the last four years collectively, in-house plus assistance that we've provided grant-wise, were over $20 million. So it's big dollars. Almost a lot of everything that we do now has grant dollars or public funds attached to it.
But Bushel's had your hands.
But before we have the affidavit, how will we monitor this? Or would we just not?
We were using the, in order to, to meet the DI requirement in any of the grant applications or any of the agencies that are required. T-HUD, for instance, that's why we had that very lengthy housing page on our website. And we had to create all of those plans and adopt them, language, plans, discrimination, everything, all those are on our website for housing. That was for the T-HUD, for the annex. Before that, we would take that same resolution that was passed in, was it 2020? And include it to show, so anytime it came up, fast forward, then obviously the news comes out and, and, you know, whether or not there are legitimate news outlets or not, that's not the issue. The question is, how do you define what's legitimate or? The question is, well, how do you know whether or not you're doing business or not? It's like, well, we don't and we don't even have the resources to follow up and investigate, let alone the authority. And so, yes, we could just force this to, say, Bulleye. We could force it to Department of Justice. But what are you going to ask for when you don't actually know anything other than what you see on published reports? Being a journalist, it's like everything's supposed to be balanced. And it's like, you know, if you believe everything you see in the print, well, come later, I'll say the McCullough Bridge or Waste Harder Street line. But with that said, I mean, in all sincerity, so when this came, you know, the port and North Bend, because we were the first two and only two that were in print. It's now expanded much larger than that. And so collectively, working with, with, turning over the port, they turned to us and said, you know, what are your thought processes? And I'm like, and, and, and so after about four hours of thinking through the process, it's how I'm like, well, let's just create an affidavit here because it transfers the onus back. You know, I have a contract that says I'm required to uphold state federal law. You all have an oath of office that says you have to. And so if we're doing business, I'm simply just transferring that for whenever I have grant dollars in play that don't exceed $150,000 in one single contract. Look at, you know, the, I give you the grant tracking list. The bulk of everything we're getting has that language in it that is less than, but there are other sections of state law, not federal side, state law, that says, when you're using the grant funds, you know, you're supposed to be in compliance. And so this was our way of saying, we're going to solve this and we put out a public media statement. The newspaper got a copy of the same statement that you all got. I tell refers that says, we're aware of the reports, we're not investigatory business. This is what we're doing administratively. If the council's not cool or comfortable with what we're doing, tell us and we'll change, we're glad. And so as an alternative, we've given you a proposed, you know, resolution that we vetted with our city attorney that is based on what the port just did as an alternative. So it's really up to you.
That seems, the resolution though, seems to put a little bit more work back on the staff, right?
Well, I don't ever want to be in, in the business of ever having to deal with all this extra administrative work of going after plans. And, and, and again, do I even know if these businesses have plans? You know, I'm sure, without, not, not sure, I'm not sure. I, I tell you, without a shadow of doubt, you go through all the administrative code and I guarantee you there's areas in, in state law that this city's not compliant with, probably because you don't know what you don't know. And so as you learn things, you know, for instance, the URA was a perfect example. You know, you're supposed to have the annual reports, annual reports out there. You know, there's certain things. If you're going to potentially, you know, demolish City Hall and incorporate it into a, a URA project, you know, you got to get the county to say, yeah, we're comfortable with that. So there's things like that that you learn through, through training. And I've only been in the, the city, you know, four years, in the state four years. So, you know, again, I don't know what businesses know or don't know, don't know what training they have, don't know what plans they have. And I don't want to be in investigative situation. But, you know, we've just gone through our first single audit with the CDDG. We catch up usually in three-year period. The next audit process we'll go through is going to be our EPA. And then behind that is now going to be our T-HUD, and that's on the federal level. So far, the state's comfortable with what we're doing. And if we go further with another step with a much more aggressive policy, they'll even be happier. I just don't see the need at this point to do it.
Let's go ahead and I see Counselor Hamilton and then we do need to be mindful of time here. So let's see if we can take another five minutes and kind of wrap this up.
So real quick, when that, when that came out too, you know, I got a lot of people talking to me and before going on top, I'd like to collect some information about what's going on. You know, in my career, like, I worked for a company, I spent a business 60-plus years. And we had, I had to help them write a harassment policy. Well, as time goes on and things change, there's all these new policies that come into play. And so when this come up and I got the information about how it's tied to grant dollars and then it whittles its way down through the city and then we get contractors or whatever we do with those grant funds, they funnel through and so it's like they connect the dots down the road. Are you compliant? Are you compliant? Are you compliant? Are you compliant? And so it makes sense, the one, you know, after knowing what the port's done, because now there's going to be contractors or people that are going to have to now develop their own policy in their company, which is going to take a lot of time for them. And so now it puts more workload on those. And if we have to rewrite all our contracts, that's more workload on us. This thing seems to be like simple. I mean, as long as we don't have ones that are sitting out there from the first day you send them out, people holding them, which would be pushback. And if we're getting them back, we, and we're not getting calls into the office screaming. I mean, it seems, it seems like it's simple.
Yeah, it seems simple to me too. We, we, we have a litigious society, which is great and also has really difficult benefits for government, for municipalities. And we're actually a municipality that has really key services that cross way more head than we did the sewer discussion already. I feel like we're here to, as best we can, protect the North Bend present and future. And that includes upholding state federal laws that are on the books, whether they change in the future, but what's on the books now. And when outside organizations make accusations and apply an investigation, the municipalities end up taking a big hit for that money, unless they do something like this, which is, this is how we figure it out. We have the companies sign that they are going to comply with these laws, whatever those specific laws are. So this is an easy, easy way for us, already strapped by Measure 176, already strapped by a bunch of other things, to get out of any of that business, which would happen in another, if we didn't have something that was so upfront. So I think we need to.
Well, I'm, I'm starting to feel like I hear a consensus from the council that we, we have, we kind of could move forward with the affidavit of compliance. It doesn't seem to be that there's any pushback from those red businesses that have been asked to sign them so far. It sounds like the majority of the council is okay with moving forward with that. And we can maybe ask to have our staff, we can check back in six months to see if there's any issues or if we need to revisit it or see if there's any other things that have come up that we need to address. That, how does that sound?
But we're not going to go to the resolution?
Well, I mean, that, what I heard is, what I heard, what I was hearing from the staff tonight is that there is, we could, we could move forward with the affidavit. If you wanted to have the resolution, it looks to me as it puts us more into the investigation business. I don't really like that option. I like knowing that the, that we as a city are asking people who are doing the businesses, that are doing business with grant dollars, to make sure that they are following the state federal policies. And I feel like this affidavit of compliance ensures that. And I think that's-
Not ever having to go through none of that.
One is our modified affidavit too, right, the one that we-
The one that's in your packet, right?
Yeah, the one that, that, the city attorney and I had worked out. That was the last one that I was given.
Yeah, perfect. So I think you have, it, it sounds like that, that you have some direction from us to move forward with the affidavit compliance. And I don't know if there's also something that you might want to share on our city website about grants and why there are certain grants out there that can be, can be put out there for historically marginalized groups in the community and why that's not discrimination? If that is, if there's some sort of piece of information that you could share out there? Because it sounded like there were some people that had some questions about why that happens too.
Yeah, I mean, the question to the public comment, I appreciate the comment, but the, the federal government, state government versus Webster's Dixie are two things. And so I can actually just rebroadcast on our website the communication I sent to the council. And so the general public can understand that. That specific verbiage is actually straight out of the Oregon Main Street revitalization law and guidance. And so most folks don't realize that in the respect to grants, they give preference to, say, minority-owned businesses that they're typically actually designed to address historical and historic systematic inequities, if you will. And so rather than to exclude or disadvantage others. And so it's a clear misinterpretation of sort of what the state's trying to do. And so, yeah, I'll gladly put that out for the general public.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that. All right, well, unless I have any further comments from the councilors, I will go ahead and move on. We did talk about nine already on the work session agenda. And that would take us to, it looks like Agenda Item 10, which is review the city council agenda for December 10. So I'm going to hand this over to the city administrator now and have him walk us through tomorrow night's agenda. But I will note that during our ceremonial item of the last Clipper 150th proclamation, I'm bringing Kate.
All right. Just the, thank you, and as the mayor said, so ceremonial, you have the last Clipper, 150th year proclamation. We have a promotion, sergeant recognition. This is Nick White. Nick White was our community resource officer, which seems to be a process of becoming a CRO and then the couple sergeants. So we have to, they have worked on back then. And then we have 10 years of service. This is a gentleman you don't always see, but he affects everything that we do around here, which is James Ingram, 10 years of service for IT specialist and network admin. And so on the consent calendar, for those due to the council, bless you. A consent calendar is just that. Generally, there's not discussion, there's generally a motion to approve. And then it moves forward. The reason for discussion is a consent calendar is generally, bless you, generally items that are non-controversial, non-controversial. However, as a council member, any council member can request an item on the consent calendar be yanked out for discussion and then it stands alone on its own as a vote. So at any time that you see staff, because the agenda is the requirement of staff until we hand it over to the mayor for the meeting. And so if there's something on the consent calendar, so during the work session, we'll go down those, explain them to you. And then I generally will ask, is there anyone that wants to pull something? And that's the reason, is because you can actually yank something out for further discussion and a vote at the regular meeting. So the first consent calendar item is the acknowledgement of the bills from November 2024. Because we pay bills and don't get into a late system with penalties, we pay the bills and we have an understanding with the council that we publish those. But our auditor actually has to see, because of your fiduciary responsibilities, that you actually approve those expenditures within guidance of approved financial policies. So in here, you see all of the check registries, the payroll checks, and the check registry with a cover sheet to explain to you what they are. And so at any time you see something, you, you're like, hey, what's this being spent on? Don't hesitate to pick up the phone or drop me an email and ask and I'll gladly get you an answer. The next is appointments to the North Bend Public Library Board. That's on Page 11. And so when we put out applications for board members, we get potential applicants. In this case, we had three come in. We then go to our librarian who's here and we ask from the library for a recommendation. And if you want to hear from your librarian on that recommendation, she's available to you or any questions. And on Page, Page 11, I apologize, she's made her recommendation because I believe there are two openings, is that correct? I'm looking down as I'm coughing, so I apologize.
Good evening. Good evening. So there, there are two vacancies that are upcoming on the library board. We did receive three applications. Typically, a library board member, in the majority case, a library board member does need to be a resident of the city of North Bend. However, because our library's service area does extend out into some of the unincorporated areas of our county, one seat is available to someone who lives outside of the city of North Bend, but within School District 13. That is the case in this particular instance, which does come into play in our recommendation. I did meet with those who are interested in serving on the board and have a staff recommendation of an appointment for Amy Hofs, who is an in-city resident. I'm sorry, she is actually, let me correct that. Amy is actually the person who is living outside of the city limits of the North Bend and Risa Dodson, who lives within the city limits.
All right. And then generally we'll say, if you have any questions, we ask the staff and then they go on back. All right. The next is the Coos County Urban Renewal Agency appointment. So we, as a governing body, you, have two positions that are appointed to the county, the Coos County Urban Renewal Agency. That agency is administered by the Port of Coos Bay. Councilman Pat Gahl was on that board. However, he is retired from the governing body, which then opens that seat. We send notification to the Port of Coos Bay informing them that the seat on the council has been vacated and concur that we will go forth with the appointment process. They confirm that, they have done that. And so this is an opportunity for you all to decide among yourselves. And then tomorrow, we'll give us a name. And then tomorrow, during the consent calendar, we will have that name written into the record as part of the consent process. Or you can always pull it out for further conversation and individual vote. However, you're going to have to appoint someone. The other member, you have two members. The other member is Mayor Engelke, who is on that at this time. So it's back to you for discussion.
And historically, just FYI, the meeting starts at 7:00 in the morning. And available via Zoom. So this is-
How long do they last?
About an hour or less. Are you thinking that it's something you would be interested in?
No, I can't do it.
Or I was thinking, Counselor Hamilton, is that something that you'd be interested in? No, I could be more, that's the current 7:00.
I didn't know if there's a week before.
The port, if you say.
You're allowed to participate, remove- You're allowed to participate remotely under the law as well.
Yeah. Yeah. I'm hearing, I'm seeing that shaking, I think Councilor Hamilton is saying that he would be interested in learning a little bit more about that, so...
Learning or being appointed?
What's that?
Learning or being appointed?
Learning or being appointed, okay.
There's a lot of difference in there.
It's in the same context.
Yeah.
Learning some interest, so boom.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Anybody else have interests?
It's interesting, but I can't really get that. Yeah. All right.
It tastes well.
Yes. Great.
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Well, I would say that if since Councilor Hamilton is shaking his head this way instead of this way, that we will go ahead and have...
Absolutely.
Got him.
There's a good one, sure.
Yeah.
All right. So we're going to add Councilman Hamilton and... All right. All right, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, the next is, there is a North Bend Public Library. This is the Ferguson Transfer Company. This is a services agreement. It is on page 22 of your packet. And so this is the cost of all their moving services totaling just under $8,900. That will be out of their library fund. And so this is just straight routine, but it exceeds the spending limit, which is why we put it under the consent.
Is there already paper moving? Is this more moving? Sorry, I have questions.
Nope, good question.
Move books, I thought.
Yes.
Is this different moving?
It is. So the first agreement was to transfer items out of the building, the furnishings and the books, and this would be for the return trip. Because we, when we needed to initiate that initial agreement, we did not have a firm understanding of what the timeline for the project would be. We chose to just address part one, and now we are on the return trip.
Thank you.
All right. And just a discussion. So the next one, you may recall an email that came from me, there was a timing of needing to move forward because of the lag. And so this was the purchase of the, I hope I don't misspell, is the Agani Library Furnishing. So on page 30, the cost of the library furniture is $20,270.23 under the library fund. And so based on the recommendation of the library director, I went ahead and pre-authorized that, sent the council a notification, letting them know that I would move that forward. Otherwise, we would have a renovated library without furnishing. And so at this time, she's available if there are any questions.
No questions?
All right. Thank you.
Oh wait, I do have a question.
Yes.
Can you give me like two second summary about the change into the children's area that we can pass along?
Yes. So the design of the children's room will be much improved. We'll have a new storytime and programming area that's much more accessible and allows for better interaction during the program. And all of the furnishings and finishes will be refreshed and much brighter.
Do we have toys?
Yes, we are actually making more space in the room for rotating and interactive displays and toys.
Do we have timeline of when that will be done?
Yes. So our initial timeline was for the library to be able to reopen in mid-February. We have, as usual, under construction, run into a few delays, but we are still very close to that timeline. Rather than being able to guarantee a mid-February opening, we are now hoping for a mid-February opening. But progress is, I would say, overall on track.
I know that it's been presented before, the different types, the amounts of grant money that has come in front of it. Off the top of your head, do you happen to know the dollar amount that was received for this project?
Yes. So total in grant funds and community donations, so local dollars raised is right at $500,000 for the project.
That's amazing. And that money cannot be used for cereal water.
That's great, yeah.
It can't be used for cereal water.
We have to make that point.
I'm more interested in how that works.
Yeah. I was at the county commission meeting, I was suggesting to hear individuals stand up from, live at rural point, saying that this is one of the nicest libraries in the county and couldn't believe that we were renovating it. I would invite anyone to come in and see the conditions of the interior of that library and what staff has endured in that building. And that building is how old?
It opened in 1989.
1989.
And this is really the first major improvement to those public spaces. An addition was added on, I believe it was in 2001, but that addressed the staff workspaces. And so it is really the first major set of improvements to those public spaces.
Although to many of us, 1989 does feel like yesterday.
35 years.
The sand.
And if you don't maintain the building, you, and so yes, the roof, the water leaks, the buckets, the children's area, the leaks, the basement, it goes on. But you all know that because you've been very consistent on working with us, their renewal agency. And I have to applaud the library director and the library boards. They didn't have to actually bring up any of that money, but it was a challenge to the library and our director, you know, help the city, help our renewal agency, help our budget. And they really returned with a half a million dollars to subsidize what we could before. So I'm very proud of what our library has done.
And that's about a third of the project cost.
That's amazing.
Really fortunate to have been able to do that.
We will have where it should.
All right. The next item on there also is specific to library. This is on page 36. This is a request, this is also a budget expense. Budget, meaning we discussed it during the budget process. This is $97,741.74, and this actually is for the new lounge seating tables and furnishings for the library's catalog, computers. And so your library director is here to answer any questions about that equipment. Otherwise, that concludes the consent agenda.
Okay.
Where can someone see the pictures? Are you sure you have like social media, website?
For the conceptual?
Yes. If you'll follow us on Facebook, we've been posting updates. And yes, those include some of our conceptual designs.
You can also schedule a tour with the library director, so you can actually see the in-progress construction. You don't have to wear a hard hat.
I do have spare hard hats and safety vests.
Okay.
Yeah, you can schedule that for the library director.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right. So anything on the consent counter that needs to be yanked, anything that wants to be yanked, otherwise it moves forward. And again, tomorrow would just simply be a motion to approve the consent. If you get a second, that moves forward without discussion, and then you move on to the next yet item.
Thank you.
It's helping for the benefit of the new councilors and returning ones.
Yeah.
All right. Public comments next. You then have a public hearing. This is ordinance number 2080. It's on page 43. And we are, this is to be presented by Derek Payne, but Ralph, are you going to take this or do you want me?
Well, Aaron and I.
Oh, Aaron, okay.
So we have spent the last eight months, I believe, updating Park's master plan. It was presented to the planning commission for approval. This has to be adopted or amended. It's adopted into our comprehensive plan as an official city plan. Tomorrow, you'll go through a public hearing first and then adopt the ordinance 2080. Reason Aaron's up here, I'm talking to about the process. He's much for, because he was on the master plan committee. I was not. He's much more familiar with the meat and potatoes of the master plan. But tomorrow, basically, in order to adopt into the comprehensive plan, any comment, we'll take public hearing comments, and then we have an ordinance adopting, adopting that into our comprehensive plan. And it's a review, kind of the final review for our Park's master plan.
Questions from the council?
Yeah, I recognize it, and you actually, Ralph, it makes sense. I look down, but I'm looking at, it makes sense to you, Ralph. I apologize. Your turn. So we apologize, the Park's plan is in your packet points. Both our city recorder and myself had headphones last week and a lot of night, big well. And so when someone asked us today, I actually, it was council later, and I'm like, is it there twice? Yes, that, we're sorry. That's, I'm blessed, sir.
We're only updating one.
Yeah, we're doing the best we could last week with all the activities we've been setting. So I apologize that, yeah, but twice. Now, the importance is this. So for the benefit of the new council members, the mayor actually has a script. We can always provide anyone a lunch line. And then if council presidents phone in, they would go through. The script basically just helps guide the process. Then we go over to the ordinance, and there's some charter provisions. And so we'll most likely take it pretty slow because if, we will go through what's called a read-by-title-only process. And if someone votes no, then we actually have to read the entire ordinance verbatim, every word. And that's happened before. And so we'll work with the mayor, so we'll probably slow down the process a little, just so that you know. And if someone votes no, we may say, hey, are you sure that that's what you want to do? Because we have the city attorney here, and he can read pretty fast, but you'd have to read the whole thing.
Still needs about seven minutes.
And so he gets on and guides us through the process, because we have to do it very specific per our charter as to how we implement. And then any ordinance done that way gets a second reading, but it doesn't go into effect unless it's an emergency item for 30 days. So any questions about that?
And if I could even add to that, is if you, if you still want to vote no on the ordinance?
Yes.
You can still vote yes on having it read by title only. So we can read it by title only. There will be a vote on whether or not you want it read by title only. And then there will be a third motion and a vote to adopt the ordinance, and that's where you'll have your discussion. And if you wanted to vote no, I mean, I think that's the appropriate way to do it, rather than to, you know, force this lengthy reading.
Yeah. Thank you. Great, great.
Counselor for us, does that make sense? Okay.
Yeah, so you can be against something and still vote against it, but on the by-title-only, it's either you title only or by verbatim. Title only is that little piece on the top. It is, some of us knows the whole word by word.
And word by word, so.
Yeah.
Have you explained why it's 2020 to 2024?
Yes, that's an easy answer.
On the back end, it says 2020, which is we're back, going back in time.
So it's supposed to be updated every 20 years.
Okay.
It was last updated in 1999, and they adopted the 2000 to 2020 master plan. This has been in progress for three and a half years. Staff attempted to do it by themselves originally, and then...
Then we paid someone to help.
Then we paid someone to finish it.
And we put it out for bid twice.
So it's a 2020, yeah, we did actually put it, we didn't even get a proposal the first time. 2020 to 2040 master plan being adopted in 2020.
All right.
But great question. Yes, thank you.
Yeah. Okay.
All right. So all good there?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, gentlemen. Appreciate that. All right.
Ralph got two.
Ralph, yeah, Ralph, Ralph, Ralph got his stuff.
Oh, tomorrow.
So now, on page 108, you have purchase of a Raz pump from Owens Pump and Equipment. Page 108, your packet, Ralph?
Very simply, same process. By our purchasing rules, we have to try to obtain at least three quotes for any pump systems. And what isn't in your packet is we finally did receive a third quote, but it was about $16,000. Our recommendation for award is for the $14,624. I didn't bring my paper up. Pump from Owens Equipment. Raz pump, return activated sludge, moves the solids end of our wastewater from our aeration basins back to, I'm not going to say back, from our primary clarifier to our aeration basin, or vice versa. We have backup pumps on every pump we have in the system. It's called reliability. So if we need one pump to do X, we have two, because if one breaks, we have to have one operational. We tried to obtain three quotes, actually did receive three, but one is not included in your packet. Owens Pump and Equipment was an Ebarra pump, was a low quote at $14,000. Forgive me, I wrote it down there, but 624?
Eight hundred and one.
Eight hundred and one, maybe.
Ninety-two cents.
And 92 cents. So staff is recommending approval of that pump.
For the record, because the third quote was received, can you simply, for the record, state the company that one was from? And if it was not a responsive quote or higher than...
Yeah, Reiner Pump, which was listed in your packet that we solicited, did not, we asked for quotes by December 4th. We received a quote on Friday, December 6th, and it was in excess of the low quote anyway, but we did receive a fourth quote. And forgive me, I don't know the exact number, it was $16,000 something.
All right. Any questions on that?
Yeah, I think I have one here.
I have a question, but it's a little bit more about how these situations are aimed, or more than just a specific thing. So when we get these quotes and we take these quotes, and we, I think we're required by law to take the low ball or whatever it is.
Lowest responsive, responsible, and responsibility can be interpreted, what I mean by responsive means it responded on time, obvious. Responsible can be, and we don't always have to take the lowest. We can base, if we don't take the lowest quote, we have to have you find that the, I'm going to say quality, because I'm stumbling here, but...
Then doesn't it...
Well, either the lowest, but it's the best bargain. If I want to say that, sometimes you'll pay more for something that's better because the service life is longer or something similar. A better piece of equipment, you're going to pay more money for as long as you can justify it.
Yeah.
If that makes sense.
Okay, justification.
We have some discretion.
Right.
So then that was the third question, is what is the spectrum for when contracts go over a specified amount? Just curious.
When you say over a specified amount, you mean like over this quote, like a change order?
Yes.
We have discretionary, is it 25%?
25%.
We have 25% over, you have residence, shipping, handling, or, but in this case, this is a valid quote. Quotes are generally valid, they stay out of 30, 60, 90 days, sometimes in bids we'll say. But as Ralph said, you put specifications out, you get three bids in, and if the piece of equipment's not compatible with existing, it will cost a lot more to, you know, bear that, or is it fearier, better? So we have a little latitude, but we inform the governing body of that in the recommendations. Except, yeah. Sometimes, yeah, exactly.
We can reject them all.
And the purpose of, say, a 25% is, let's say that Ralph's team's out doing something, and they come across a pipe they didn't expect, and now they have to do a change order. Well, they have threshold of 25% latitude on that. And so generally, what you've seen is if we suspect a staff, it's something like this what happened, we try to get it not to exceed that if we anticipate something like that. So.
All right. As a reminder to the council, we have two minutes to wrap up the meeting, otherwise we have to ask the councilmen forward. So I'll stop talking, we can just wrap these...
All right. So the next one is exciting. It's been before you, Johnson Rock Products, page 173. It's demolition of the old visitor information center. I told them I'd do it for free, they'd give me the front end loader, but apparently I'm not allowed to do that. And so Johnson Rocks has $14,264 to demolish that. Any questions about, I was hearing that one? All right. Then do not expect anything from executive session, there isn't one. The administrators report, council reports. I do want to amend the agenda, we'll change it. Three B's and B's going to come off, C will move up. We're going to have to reschedule because of some scheduling conflicts that I've been made aware of. And so.
You said three B's.
Three B's and B's will come off.
Off, okay.
Come off, you're going to reschedule that. It's still promoted, just rescheduling it. And then that goes back to your regular.
All right, we'll do that.
Agenda, which is adjourned.
If that was the last thing, go ahead and adjourn the first council meeting.
Thank you.
With our new council.